We'll start this meeting with a flag and a prayer. Who can read it?
My pleasure, Mr. President.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to gather tonight, and we look forward to the future of Goder. Lord, I pray that the decisions made in this room would just be intentional and what is absolute best for the future of our community. We pray this in your name. Anybody?
Okay, approval of the agenda. I need to add two agenda items. One, item H six, we're going to pay for all the free second additions. We'll just approve the low bid, or the first approval for the low bid. And then we're going to also add a second executive session for returning client privilege.
Yeah, maybe 10 minutes.
10 minutes. Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Brent. Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, we'll move to item D, citizen comments. At this moment, you'll allow, be allowed to speak for three minutes, and we'll keep it for three minutes. Who's the first contestant up tonight?
I'm George Lee. I live at 227 North Spruce here in Goder. And I have a couple of comments on a couple of issues that have come up here recently. First, I just wanted to express that I oppose using general obligation bonds for paving streets. I think that the people that live near those streets and on those streets should be responsible for bearing all, but not part, of the burden for those streets. The other thing that struck me is that in the minutes of the previous meeting, that Second Street, near and on north of 54, and then possibly Hartness, might be paved. I hope this just isn't a way to kind of get the paving done into Tanganika on the backside of things. I live on Second Street, and I would maintain that the best maintained part of Spruce, Second Street, is from 199 to Main Street. I know it's gravel, but if you go west on Second Street, like First Street, Third Street, Oak, Palm, and Spruce, those streets are in severe need of maintenance. Deferred maintenance is a big issue, I think, with the streets that we have. I think that issue is being ignored. The other thing I'd like to comment on is express my concern about the city's venture into industrial revenue bonds. I don't know if you saw on the news last week, but the city of Alata captured a contract with Toyota for a large industrial plant, 600 high-paying jobs. Our foray into the industrial revenue bonds is to build a retail strip center for a business that might generate 20 entry-level jobs. I don't think that's the intent of industrial revenue bonds, to build retail space. We've got retail space available on Kellogg. And the other thing is waiving those fees for hookups. I don't blame, last week or two weeks ago, that the brewer company, whether it's building their new coffee house, they came in, they want industrial revenue bonds too, and you don't waive their fee hookups. And it seems like you start down a path of giving things away, and I don't think industrial revenue bonds, the purpose of them is to build retail space. And I would hope that you reconsider your general obligation bond and not pass it down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. Anybody else? Yes, Ben?
Ben Healy, Out West Bar, 1690 South 183rd. Really just wanted to say thank you to all of you. Thank you to all of you, and the planning commission, to the community. We've opened Out West on 183rd and Kellogg. It's gone well. We hope to bring more, and really just, I almost missed the meeting, but we talked and said, oh, man, tonight's meeting. I just had to come in here and say thank you. Thank you to everyone involved. Thank you for all the help to get us fast-tracked. Hopefully, it's to your liking. Hopefully, if we worked really hard and really fast to get things done, I feel like my team will not work anybody. So, one, thank you so much to everyone. Everyone that touched the project, everyone that helped, everyone that approved, everyone that, you know, asked questions of caution to help us, you know, do the thing better. The other thing I would say is, if you have any concerns or anything that we can do better, please let me know, either here or later. We're going to mess up, and we're going to, you know, do some things that we need to improve on every day, and we're figuring it out. So, that's really all I have to say, mostly thank you so much. It seems to be going well, and I hope to bring more, you know, joy into the community. I think we are, you know, every weekend, get a little bit more, get a little more community out there. So, that's all. Thank you. You have any questions for me?
No. Thank you, Ben.
Okay.
If it's not for people like you, we would never grow. And so, you're taking a risk on Goder, and we appreciate it.
Well, yeah, and it takes, it takes two, take both sides. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Ben. All righty, next contestant. Who's that?
Andrew, Main Street 304, 10th and 13th Room. We're representing our Lions Club. When it comes to the agenda item of the community center, is it possible for us to be able to contribute and share our feedback during that time, or is this the best time to do that?
Well, I would say you guys have a stake. I mean, you guys use the community center. You have, you know...
I just didn't want to connect that.
You have appointments on the agenda. You have appointments on the community center, so...
Okay.
I mean, unless if it's just, I mean, it's going to be constructive, right?
Correct.
Okay. Right?
I'm not really sure what the question was. Did she want to talk, you want to talk during the agenda item, or...
So, when it comes to the community center, being able to discuss the timeline for...
I think it's best, I think it's best if you give your comments now during citizens' comments, and then let, I believe Brooke, Brenda Brooks, is going to handle the agenda item. And we don't, we don't want to sort of have too much commentary during the actual agenda items. So, I think now would be best to just kind of give your opinions on it, and then we'll let city staff actually handle the presentation.
Answer it. I think I understand what the, what your concerns are. We do not have a timeline yet on when the construction will actually take place. That will be up to the vendors that are chosen, and we will make every attempt we can to keep the community center open. There are going to be times when we're going to have to have it closed because of certain, you know, safety issues with the particular construction that's happening. But we will keep an open dialogue. You're welcome to contact me, or Micah, or Terry at any time to discuss, and we will try as best we can to cooperate with all the local groups to make sure that if we have events that we are able to provide space for, we want to do that, but some of them may not be able to happen. So, it's all going to depend on what feedback we get from the contractors that we choose and their availability, so...
Amanda, is there any comment, I guess, that you would have, a point that you would like to make?
Yeah, so just the concern was, if the construction work is intended to start pretty soon, it will impact the Goder Lions Club significantly when it comes to financial. Our bingo is set for a specific location. We did find out we can change the location with the state of, state, the case of revenue, but we have to submit that location to them. And because of our bingo board and it being so large, if we move that multiple times, like let's say we can go to church this time, and then we need to go to, you know, another location this time, it risks damaging that board. So, being able to allow us to have the time to find a location, we have a list of places that we can call and try to see if they have availability for us to move those, because each of those bingos do generate around $1,000 to $1,200 for our club. That goes directly to Mid and Tree. So, if we lose that $8,000 over, you know, the anticipated timeline, that's a significant impact to our club. So, we're just really wanting to ask for that consideration and making sure that we have the time to find another location if that needs to be. And then, you know, before anything gets started and we have notice, to be able to do that, and just make sure that other clubs and other organizations also have that. Because my understanding, there's a, if anything was to start anytime soon, there's a lot of organizations that would be impacted by something starting sooner than, you know, getting thought of when we thought we would start, you know, later on in the year.
Okay. And we'll talk about this more on the agenda item as well, so...
Okay. The other, another point that I wanted to make is, just to make sure too, that we have a clear scope of work and plan for the community center. So, we did thankfully have that opportunity to be able to meet as a community and share our feedback, not additional help assistance, kind of see where things are at. I did notice that there was two changing tables listed on the sheet for today, which we only really need one. There's not enough room in the second bathroom or a changing table. So, that makes me wonder, you know, should we look at that again and say, are we spending any money on stuff we don't need to? Because that could save us on that budget, because there's really no room in that other bathroom for a changing table. And we really, really need one, and that would be a room, so that everybody doesn't really there. So, just things like that for us to review that and see, you know, if we really have everything ready to go before we start hiring contractors.
Okay. And I, if I want to, I might call on you guys if I want any interjection on the agenda item, if I want to, so... Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Going once? There we go.
Russ, one, 1994, West Kellogg Drive. Previous opinion on industrial revenue bonds and things of that nature, or anything that you can do to help out a business, I'm absolutely opposed to not giving those. I don't know how many people have actually launched a business, started a business, reached into their own checkbook to make that happen, such as a coffee shop, which was a great example. I'm going to give them that idea, that you should go to the city and try to minimize your risk in any way that you possibly can. It's fair. Others, other cities do it, other states do it, and it is a huge risk mitigator in the short term. So, I want you to frame it this way. It is short-term give for long-term gain. Thank you very much.
Russ, thank you. I can't agree with you anymore. I mean, you hit the nail on the head, so... Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Sold! Okay, we're moving on. Item F, consent agenda. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda? None?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Brent, second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item H one, master fee schedule change.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item H.1, since the master fee schedule resolution. So, static recurrent fees that are not calculated are particularly included in the master fee schedule, referenced by citizens and cities for comparison and review. In time and time change to these fees for adoption of new fees required review and approval by the governing body with an adoption of the resolution for revised master fee schedule. On October 3, 2022, the City Council approved the equity fee applying to low, secondary thinking of language related to fees according to line size. It was noted after adoption that the lowest line size does not exist, and it was for a two-inch sewer line. All sewer lines typically start around four inches in the distance there. So, city staff is actually asking to shift the fees accordingly and remove the sewer line size to two-inch master fee schedule. So, this is kind of, the green is what we'd be introducing, the red's what's going away. So, when we introduced the two-inch line size, that was my mistake, and the public works director, the city engineer, looked at me like I was crazy, because there is no such thing as a two-inch sewer line size. It starts at four inches and goes up. And so, that was a mistake on my part, so I'm asking for City Council to consider amendment to actify that. So, it was part of four inches and then off from there. So, basically, we shifted it out. Can I actually, now, legally, prove that's the form? Just reference to the Council for the resolution, amend and master fee schedule to include four inches of that. And I have open questions and comments.
Do you guys have any questions? Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion.
Motion by Aubrey.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much. This is item H.2, resolution authorizing issuance of taxable tax temporary notes series 2023-4 for Bridger Avenue Phase 1. So, Bridger Avenue Phase 1 petitions for financing improvements were considered on May 15, 2023, and after being reviewed, it was determined to approve petitions for financing improvements for Bridger Avenue Phase 1. Improvements were approved with resolutions 23 through 26, 23, 27, 23, 28, 23, 29, petitions totaling 3.6 million. That was step one, and on June 5, 2023, the governing body approved resolution 23-23, authorizing people public finance and the city's financial advisors to build more available cities bond, he also offered sale taxable general obligation temporary notes in an estimated amount of 3.815. On June, on June 28, 2023, that was step two. So, this is going to be step three, resolution authorizing issuance of taxable general obligation temporary notes series 2023-4. The note amount is about to exceed 3.9 million. The note maturity date is August 1st, 2024. You won't note that's a pretty fast maturity date. The assumption is that there would be refinancing. Note called date would be February 1st, 2024. Financing includes the product cost, cost of insurance, and capitalized interest to make the current interest payments during construction. So, we're borrowing interest as well as the principal, and we're going to be paying the back with that, or money. Notes are scheduled to close on July 9. That's when we'll actually have the funds in our account as well. So, it'll close, and then the funds will be transferred to the project, which is when the funds will be available for the project. This will offer cost to be paid by the temporary note, or season approved contract construction costs, and engineering fees. And due to the city's taxes and bank qualification limit for 2023, these issuance must be issued taxable. We discussed that earlier in the year, because we've exceeded 10 million. Financing plan is to sell issued taxable GEO ten notes 2023, 2023, and finance them in early 2024, slightly over term taxes and GEO ten notes. And 2026, prior to maturity, the tax ten notes will be retired on general obligation bonds, and the bond names will be paid via special assessments on our property, which benefits people. That's what we call specials. And this is where these are a little more unique, since we have June 19, which is today, and July 4, which would be in the day after the July 3 meeting. They're asking for this resolution to be modified in such a way to kind of give permission to bond council and financial advisor to issue the bonds already, or to issue the, to the lowest two-interest cost applicant, and then to kind of ratify it above the year payment. This would be, the improvement district is purple. It's on its sides, but normal is actually this way. This is maple. Purple is phase one, which is where the improvements would be going. Financial considerations issued complies with the document resolution 23-23, detailed above. Cost of improvements will be financed through KSA 12, 6, and 11. Through the special assessment process, the proposed documents are reviewed by bond council Kevin Cowan, who more than financial advisor, show the city's public finances, and city general account. It is referenced in the Council document, resolution of second sale of taxable general obligation temporary notes series 2023-4 on June 28, 2023. And warning the notes to the bidder providing the lowest true interest cost. To the city is recommended by financial advisor, certain circumstances being satisfied of that, and the rest issue. So, basically, since they, it's not a good day to sell bonds today. It's not a good day to sell bonds on the 3rd, so they're hoping to sell on the 28th, and they're asking if you guys have, Robert's staff, going to give them permission to do so outside of the normal parameters. Kevin Cowan or bond council, do you have any questions for them? Or if I said anything, or I feel that you're correct?
I don't have any questions. This is another, another tool, I guess, that we use, GEO ten notes, right?
A lot of cities do, especially in this area.
And so, it's a beneficial tool, so we can get on with it, so... Do you guys have any questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion?
Sound motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
The hot seat.
Obviously so. This is the item we've been waiting on, apparently. Q. Center. As we know, the Q. Center is a city-owned building, rented to citizens for gatherings used by community groups and the public library, and ladies clubs, and senior clubs for exercise class, exercise classes, fundraisers, and public shows and other events. At the February 21 city council meeting, staff was directed to gather bids for renovation of the building interior. The building has not had any major renovations, renovations, or updates in recent history. The interior of the building needs complete rehabilitation, including updating bathrooms, kitchen, painting, ceiling, window covering, sanding, and sealing of the wood floor, and lettering of the building's foundation, necessarily in that order. Interior renovations will include replacing existing ceiling tiles, pans, insulation, new LED lighting. Panment will be pulled down, replaced with sheet rock and new paint. The closet doors will be widened or replaced, and we're going to change how some of them swing to make them more accessible. Bathrooms will be made unisex to accommodate all patrons, and new sinks, manages, toilets, and diaper changing stations will be installed. Kitchen updates include replacing beverage, countertops, and flooring. Hand wash sink will be added that allow to make sure they adhere KBG guidelines. The building's structure is solid and in good condition. There's a rumor that goes around town that you can't do this on the floors, that it'll fall through. That is not true. We've had engineers enter to look. It won't fall through, and if it did, you're going to lose maybe, but it's not going to. So, it's in good condition, but the northwest corner of that foundation has settled, causing a noticeable slump in the flooring and foundation. That lift period where we installed there stopped that settlement and lift and level the building and the floor. Bids were solicited from several vendors for each stage of the project, interior flooring and foundation. Best bids are listed below. Rains Construction will do the interior rehound, and Foster Flooring will finish, refinish the floor. Drive Basements Inc. will raise and level the foundation and floor. For that to happen, we will maybe, possibly have to remove the ACs for that repair, and so Phoenix have to bid for that. And then, as was mentioned earlier, we've got miscellaneous items here, and yes, they put two changing tables in. It's better to put two changing tables in now and take one out, then come back and have to ask for another. Cost total of the bids is 112, 299. We're asking for a 15% contingency for a total cost of 129,183 dollars. We're requesting approval to move forward with the rehabilitation of the community center. The cost will be allocated 100% to fund 90 capital improvement and community center capital outweigh. Questions, comments, and fun stuff?
Okay, so I'll start off here. I've got a few things on this agenda item. One, we had our meeting with staff and the community to discuss what does the community want, and you delivered that, Brooke. And I want to tell you, you did a good job. Now, when it, when I hear comments about, well, we want to see a plan, we want to see this, we want to see that, well, that's why we had that meeting. And that's why we have you as staff, because you put that together and you can deliver. Now, when it comes to having possible conversations with the community in the future, we can do that as a council, and if we want to sink in a specific spot or whatever, we can talk about that. Construction happens in phases, does it not?
It does. Given we're on a good chance, I'd like to address time for me to finish there.
And, and so, one thing that I want to make a point is that this council has allowed more communication from this bench and to the staff than any other council that I have seen. This project has been number-one project since January, and we have to get it done. Now, when it comes to timeline, we will not wait until October. We will do it now, and we will start as soon as possible. Now, other community groups have reached out, and they're asking, can we wait a week? And I think it would not be hard to tell the contractors to wait until next week.
And to address that, some of the timeline is going to be dependent on when the contractors can come out.
Right.
Obviously, first would be a flooring contractor. I spoke with him Friday. He may not be out until August 1st, depending on work. And so, I got to get a timeline, so he may not be totally 100% in control of that timeline.
Right. That's correct. The other thing is bingo. I spoke with Amanda earlier today. One of the concerns that was brought up on why, I guess, we were wanting to wait until October was all of the bingo events. I understand that, and we found out that we can change it. And I already talked to Gail, our lovely school board member here, earlier today. See if maybe the school district can help. If not, then we'll try to get a church or somebody else to help. This would be a good opportunity for the community to be stronger together, right? And to work together, because this project needs to get done. It's just like renovating a home. The mom and the wife never likes it, because there's dust in the air, but you have to muscle through it, and we have to muscle through it as a community. We, but we have to get it done. Yes, Sarah?
And one thing, I know I've been to bingo before, and I know the number board is very valuable in, when you guys do bingo, but if there are other means, like when the school does it, when they do their fundraisers, they just project it onto their screens, the numbers, so that people can keep track that way instead of, and then we wouldn't have to move the number board. You guys wouldn't have to risk damaging it in multiple moves or whatever. So, that, I mean, there's options for getting the numbers visible to the people who are there in playing go without moving that board.
There, there may be downtime, for instance, between lifting the foundation. There may be, we may get that work done, and we may have a weird duty downtime, where it must still be used before the general contractor comes in to do the interior. I don't know. And if so, the building is still obviously usable. But like I say, so much it goes on to when the contractors can be here. And no one will book anything until this was approved.
Yeah. Yeah. I know that there was a, a rumor that went around that we were going to close it down tonight. I was never told that we were going to close it down tonight. I was not aware of any of that. So, I heard that, and that was new news to me. And so, we're on, what I'm trying to do is squash that rumor right here and right now. We're not closing it down this week. But what we do need to do, Terry, is figure out who is on for the next weeks to come, figure out when the contractors will be out, and reach out to them and say, hey, we got to adjust our plans here.
And I've talked to Genesis about the senior group and their exercise classes. They said, as soon as we get a timeline, the majority of those seniors, most likely through their Medicare, have senior sinkers, so they get free memberships at the Genesis.
Okay.
And they're, the lady who is in charge of their exercise classes has said, just let them know, and she can get, work on getting somebody in there to accommodate, because somebody from Genesis will have to teach the class, but they will gladly do that for our seniors, so that they don't have to miss their exercise classes.
Yes, Amanda?
Um, the other concern is, is if this is to move up sooner than August 1st, the other concern is, is we have to get ourselves out of that building, and our schedule is very expensive fireworks right now, so that's going to be a challenge. And all the fireworks, we don't have a place to store it right now. And again, we weren't anticipating this for a week. So, August 1st allows us a little bit more time to be done with fireworks and be able to...
Well, so what we'll do, what we'll do is... Well, so what we'll do, what we'll do is, once Brooke finds out that when the contractor will be out, then we'll communicate that to you and try to coordinate. I mean, if we need to help, if I need to be out there and help you move the fireworks, by God, I'll do it, okay? Whatever I've got to do, this is something that the community needs. And I think that the reason why we haven't gotten this accomplished in the past is because we have every which excuse not to get it done. And so, I'm putting my foot down, and we're getting it done. We're just going to rip the Band-Aid off, and we're going to do it.
And just to be clear, the fireworks are not being stored in the community centers? They are out there, they don't need storage, isn't it? That is even for the stuff that's in here. They leave the community center alone.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think it hurts to have contingency plans too, because in between the phases of these projects, you still have to make sure it's a safe and habitable building before it gets hacked. I wouldn't make a contingency plan anyway, you know, for anything you have planned. And, and, is, is that, is that real? I mean, so between these phases, if they did a foundation, is what could make part of that building unsafe or public until the rest of the phases are done?
And we're moving forward. In between the phases, we may be able to, to add, there's a issue, I don't see a problem. And I don't know how to talk about how long the general contractor tends to take, because he really didn't want to answer that, and so he started turning it down. Obviously, the last will be floor, sanding, and, and sealing. And they told us they could make that look like a basketball court floor. So, that remains to be seen, that'll be kind of.
The, the chairs that get drug across the floor, will that damage?
I'm, I'm sorry.
The chairs that get drug across the floor, will that damage?
It would be a good idea to pick chairs up to move in the future instead of dragging them across. That would not be the best on the permanent floor service, of course, but that's what we're going to talk in.
Let's remember that this can be a good opportunity for the community, the school district, the churches, everybody to come together and work together. So, we're always talking about community and sticking together. Well, let's just see how close we can actually get.
There are some things that, that come up, like choosing paint colors. I'm a decorator.
Sure.
I would be more than happy to have someone who knows what they're doing choose paint colors.
Right.
Line colors, that kind of thing. Actually, it's not going to be pretty. It's going to be almost, I don't know that stuff.
Yeah.
I'm utilitarian. So, I would be, I would be glad to have some assistance on that and get some input on what they want and those kind of things.
Perfect, perfect.
But we'll make it happen as quickly and cleanly as possible.
This guy right here, he, he's, he's a master decorator?
Yeah, I, I believe so.
You believe him?
I told him.
Oh, I, I told Terry that I donate the countertops for the community.
Oh, I did tell him that.
But I didn't want to, we're in a public meeting, with that, that'd be an unfair turn on my, on my job.
Yeah, I got, I got you covered.
Thank you.
Next. For the bathroom, the back between the tiles for the bathroom. I didn't see if it's on there.
It's here for the, the wish, I was thinking.
That's, we were, that's like tile on the wall, just for the community area.
It's not, it's not for tile walls, though. That was something that was not in any of the Bay of Division. But I believe we can see the stuff in the chambers if we want to talk about that.
That is one of the things, like, that was something that was specifically this.
I missed that, I'm sorry, I didn't miss that, I don't know.
I wanted to know if that we approve or ask if the tile can, can be costly.
Well, and you added the fifteen percent contingency.
We know what's going to happen, there'll be some changes. We may have some lower costs, when it came a little bit higher, but I think we'll go in, in a range where we should be, if there is a material we need to.
Right, right. Well, okay. Do you guys want to approve the budget for the community center?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the rehabilitation of the Goddard Community Center for one hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-three.
Motion by Keaton?
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, Brooke. Item eight-four.
So, similar to the techno sale, this is the bond issuance for the three projects. This is the final third step in the three-step process. We're not through the last two meetings. Bond received one one seven, two million. First full payment days, we aren't going to first, we're sending it to another chain of payments, all days, thirty-one, or twenty-one-year bond, and twenty percent payments. Financing includes the project costs, and the cost of issuance. Scheduled date closes July nineteenth, so we're on stage. The bond is just a pleasure why we're having it approved prior to the month of. And it will, it should be approved in the year of signing. It's been viewed by our legal counsel, Kevin Cowan, our lawn council, and our financial advisor, Brooke Shover. Kevin, does your attorney have anything you'd like to add? Unless there are specific questions from you.
Pretty much hard to cover this.
Anything to change from last year's taxes we talked about?
So, we'll need a, well, first, prior to adopting the ordinance for the issues of geo law, we'll need to, do a review of the simple.
Okay, do I have a motion?
No motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. Roll call. Oh, boy, oh, wait. All, okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I make a motion to adopt the.
Motion by Sarah, second by Brent. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaven?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Will be ordinance number nine twenty-seven.
Okay, and then we need to adopt a bond resolution accepting the sale of Geo Federal Obligation Bots, or in twenty twenty-three, that A, due to A, I mean, A, twenty twenty-three, and warning the bonds that are providing the lowest true interest cost to S and Q to cities recommended by the financial advisor, so that the deserving party are being satisfied that they're identified with the resolution.
No motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And you?
Okay, thanks, ma'am. Item eight-five.
Good evening. All right, so tonight I'm going to make a presentation for the purchase of two police Tavo's. This is to cover and replace one vehicle. We'll keep one elderly, I guess you could say, vehicle, just to increase our fleet from twelve to thirteen, or from, yeah, from twelve to thirteen, I'm sorry, thirteen to fourteen. So, in twenty twenty-two, our budget and twenty twenty-three budget includes the purchase of an amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to cover the replacement of two patrol cars. And in twenty twenty-two, the only vehicle we purchased was one additional vehicle, which was added to the fleet to assign to attend circle for disposition, which is mostly administrative. Currently, the fleet consists of thirteen vehicles for thirteen staff members, two of which have over a hundred thousand miles. An additional officer should be returning for and from being military assigned in twenty twenty-four, that first quarter. Continuing the purchase of patrol vehicles on basis based upon mileage amounts on a hundred thousand keeps our fleet from getting extremely costly, and currently equates keeping a patrol duty vehicle in usage for five to six years. Patrol duty as in an officer responding primarily to calls, who is riding the streets daily. Here it is, a spreadsheet I made that shows how many vehicles right here are in the fleet. And you can see currently there's twelve, and this year we added, I made it thirteen, and we added one. These are the vehicle numbers. The year of the vehicle, the make of the vehicle, how many miles it currently has, and the average miles per year. When the plan is to retire them, and what their usage is, who's assigned to the vehicle, and the, the type of marking that it has. Over here is kind of just a projection. We did not sell any vehicles in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I'd like to sell one right now, which would be vehicle twenty-eight. That is a Tavo. Myself, the staff, and our maintenance technician all agree that this vehicle is kind of the most costly, it seems to be the nickel-and-dime vehicle. It is year-wise the oldest, it doesn't have the most mileage, but it is something that we, people in the panic agrees it would be the best one to sell. And then for next year, selling three and adding three. So, purchasing three and selling three. Keep it at thirteen, and in twenty twenty-four, having that fourteenth vehicle. Was it nothing we sell the years? What's the? How do you sell, auction, or what? Purple Wave, yes. So, they're stripped of all the equipment. You must have the equipment as far as the radio, obviously, the computers, the laptop, you come and go with the vehicle. The camera system comes out. The camera system is something we'll address in the next council meeting, on a July nineteenth, I believe it is, meeting, for a new camera system for all vehicles and cars. So, financials, and, and just to kind of go back and put all this in there, I have not just guessed, I mean, I like the way the wheels flip on a police Tavo. We had, some of you may remember, when I requested the purchase of two Ford Explorers that were hybrids back years ago that we got approved, that still have not come in. I'm saying years ago, because that's when they were ordered, they still are not arrived. I have two Tavos, at least two Tavos, there's more that I could get locally, but there's two Tavos. We've been purchased by track control sources who we utilize to outfit our vehicles. They have those in stock, and we'll start outfitting those as we get this approved. So, that's why I chose that. In addition to the Ford Explorers that we currently have, there's been some product delivery, there's been some product, some of the maintenance issues, and some recall issues that I'm not comfortable with. So, we, we've been very happy with the Tavos that we've had. The one Tavo, like I said, I didn't want to get rid of is because of its history that it has as far as usage and stuff like that. So, that's where I came about the Tavos. Other agencies are using Tavos as well, but they are a little bit higher quality than what we can get out of Ford Explorer. They provide a little bit more space for officers physically as well to.
Black, black and white?
They would be black and white, yes. So, they kind of black, we paint the doors white, North Policing Center, I kind of laid that out there. So, we, the Tavo, two Tavos at seventy thousand, five hundred and sixty-five apiece, owing that amount. Then additional cost to paint the doors, and add graphics on there. That total for both vehicles, hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred and forty and twenty cents. That's the amount that would be trying to be physically responsible, a minimal, a minimal point, you want to buy a white one and paint the doors black?
So, we just buy a white one and a black one to switch the doors.
Yeah. So, just keep with your car shift.
Because we can partner with the show classes, school, if we wanted a project.
That's right, right.
So, how are, how are we getting this? Is it through a fleet?
So, the cost of that vehicle, that is, TCS does a good job of going around and finding the vehicles that are available. They have high standards and work with other dealerships, and vehicles right now, police vehicles, are tough to come by. You'll see a lot of agencies are moving to some Dodge Rangers. They're smaller. They, they have different aspects about them that may not work as well as the Tavo would for us. I'm not, you know, not asking for a Cadillac, but I think the Tavos would be a much better vehicle and provide less maintenance and maybe.
Just because also, how do you get the pricing? Is it through the fleet dealer, or is it through, or is this?
That is, yeah, that's the first, yes, yeah. It's pretty much MSRP, but they purchase a vehicle, and that's essentially what that vehicle costs us, is what it costs them. They're not making much on the actual vehicle. They're just finding that vehicle, and then they'll outfit it, and if they have a surplus of outfitting vehicles, then they sell them. So, they'll, they'll be getting like, I think, five or six in, and at minimum, I would like to have two. You want to give us four, that's up to you and Matt. I think the, the minimal amount that we need to do to sustain a good, safe fleet and not have a vehicle out there with over a hundred thousand miles going, over a hundred miles an hour in certain situations.
Right. Okay, do we want to?
What, what's the plan with vehicle thirty-nine, the sergeants that he's retiring? So, will that just mean that we'll have three?
So, we will have, his, his plan is to have a, a retirement soon, and that vehicle, hate to say extra, but we'll have an open position in the department, okay? So, we want to fill that. How we fill that kind of may be left up to who applicants are that come in. Probably going to be an officer filled position, and then just kind of decide on where we go from there. But with the plan of having that open position to be filled, and then potentially another coming back next year, we'll be fully staffed at fourteen, hopefully, which would give a vehicle a person, and we've shown that that has the much better maintenance success than hot-seating cars and keeping them running for days.
Right, for sure.
So, the animal patrol officer, do you feel objective at this point?
Well, currently, we don't have any animal patrol officer. We can talk about that maybe in August's meeting. But, but it is designated out for the usage of putting a dog or whatever animal you need to into that vehicle, so it's not going into a police vehicle, so it's not, it's, it's set up for that, and just sense there would be availability for an officer to grab that and use that if they needed to. But like you said, it doesn't give you miles. Neither does my car, or the detective's vehicle is perfect at that. I mean, that, that seems like a lot of miles, but for what it's used for and the type of vehicle setup, it's, it's fine with that. This one right here will be one that gets replaced next year, and this one right there is one that gets replaced next year. So, as you can see with that, that price of a hundred and forty-six thousand, that's just for two vehicles, and three would be more for next year. So, when we talk about the next year's budget, that would be something to keep in mind, which I think we already have.
This is, I was going to say, this is already like a budgeted item.
Yeah, and some of the, so what we did, we budgeted for those two Explorers to get, and this amount is a little bit more than that. It's about twenty-five thousand more, because they're a little bit more expensive.
Sure.
So, like.
But they'll actually show up?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. Yep, so, the recommendation is that the city council approve the purchase, the outfitting, and accounting of two twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tavo two vehicles. Cost not to exceed, I just want to have me an even number, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, do I have a motion?
No motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we have item eight-six, paving for Arbor Creek.
Hello, Maryland City Council. There's no agenda item presented on this one, we're just going to have to do an ad hoc, which we're just going to talk if you guys have questions. Basically, on June seventh at ten AM, we opened bids for our Creek second edition, paving an incidental drainage, and the low bidder was Pearson. They came in below the engineer's estimate. Engineer's estimate was six hundred and seventy-two thousand, fifty dollars, and Pearson's low bid was six hundred and twenty-six thousand, one nineteen. Second low bid was con spec at six hundred and forty-two thousand. APAC was third at seven hundred and ten, two seventy-one. Since we're not going to have it July third, meaning I think it's better just to go ahead and do this in item, I'll, because they want to get started right away, and if we waited until July seventeenth, it kind of delays the process. They want to get started right, but it's, you know, keep the head of the rain as much as they possibly can. So, by allowing this, the motion would be to award a bid to Pearson and authorize the mayor to sign the contracts when provided by Pearson Construction. That way, they don't have to wait to. That way they don't have to wait until July 17th. This is just a typical low deal award to the lowest bid of this project. Is there any questions about that? We do have Brooke Rendell, who's a car and four acre city engineer, going to do it with these projects. Any questions about this?
Pretty straightforward. Do I have a motion to approve the low bid for Pearson Construction?
Second.
Motion by Aubrey.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, governing body comments.
Well, first I want to say thank you to everybody who showed up to our first Main Street Market. At least, I feel like it was a huge success. It was a lot more. I was walking down the street with Angie. We were doing, making a little video and I was like, man, I was hoping more people would turn or would show up. And then we turned around and there was like 200 people walking behind us. And I was like, oh, they just came from the other way. But yeah, we had a great turnout and we sent out a survey to all of our vendors and we got information back. They ranked it 4.7 out of 5 as their opinion. So we have a couple of things we're going to fix, a couple of things to tweak, but overall we feel like it was a big success. So that next one is July 9th. So super excited to see everybody out there. We actually, we had 34 vendors at the last one. We're at 37 for the next one. So we are growing and we're still taking registration up until the time that it starts. So if you know somebody or you yourself have any interest, I'd love to talk about that with you. Other than that, super excited with getting some stuff done. You know, there's a lot of things that Goddard has needed for a while and it's been neglected and we're done neglecting it. So we'll keep open communication as best as we can and make sure that it gets done the correct way. But super excited to see Goddard moving in a positive direction.
Thank you. Keaton, Sarah?
I guess I'll second that I'm excited about getting things done. The community center's been a long time debate on, do we build a new one? Do we fix what we have? Can we fix what we have? Can anybody crawl under the building to see if it's structurally sound? All the things. So I'm glad that we're getting things done and getting it where it needs to be so that our community members can continue to benefit from it and more people can use it. Like, is the library remodel done?
I'm sorry?
Is the library remodel done?
No, library is being carpeted right now. It may be done Friday or may carry over a little bit. They had some leveling to do in the floor once they got the old carpet up. So it slowed them up a couple of days, but they're making headway.
Wonderful. That was another long time coming thing and glad we've got the geo bond rolling to get roads paved. Unfortunately, it's one of those things we as a community have to take on as a whole because the four houses that are on Second Street can't afford the specials that would be applied to them if they themselves paid for the painting of that road. And that's part of being in a community is upkeep of the community. And there are roads in Goddard that do need taken care of and part of that money will go to fixing roads that need taken care of. So.
We're actually getting things done?
Getting things done. It's another thing that's been a long time coming. So I'm excited to see these things move forward.
Aubrey?
Yeah. You know, I mean, you said everything I want to say. I mean, it is, if you live in Florida, yeah, it happens or you just be sick. So you've got to make tough decisions. Not really in agreement with those decisions, that's okay. Well, I'm going to reward from the things we're making happen, so.
Brent?
Oh, I'm good. I'm not going to mention anything about cars.
I saw the things with us. They're like, oh.
It does, it does my good, doesn't it? It does, it does, it does.
Okay, I guess the only two comments I'm going to make, one and the same, but the geo bond and the IRB comment, when it comes to, are we allowed or should we do it for those things? We run all of those projects through our city staff that audit the qualifications of an IRB or a geo bond. And also, when it comes to waiving tap fees, that's also an incentive that we can do as a city. And it's pretty simple in my mind. Either you want to grow or you don't want to grow. If you don't want to grow, then that's your stance, then you don't want to grow. But if you want to grow, well, then you have to incentivize businesses to come in. You have to take care of your neighbors. You have to do a general obligation bond to pave Second Street. Everybody complained about the North Frontage Road and how bad the parking lot was on. Well, how do we expect that to get done? Are we going to assess all of the North Frontage Road businesses? I don't think so. That's not going to work out too well. So we as a city have to step up to the plate and get the job done because that's the right thing for the city. If not, well, then we all can just go to hell in a handbasket real quick. So we just got to muscle up and we got to do it. And then that's it. All right. We got two executive sessions. Does one, someone want to make a motion?
I agree.
Motion?
You got to read it. You got to do it.
I'll put the glasses apart. I'll make a motion to recess an executive session under KSA 75-319. Fee to for consultation with attorney in matters that would be deemed privileged attorney-client relationships to include the city attorney, public works director, or finance director who reconvene open meeting as a city council member at 8:05.
Can we, Jeff, can we, can we include that executive session to include the city engineer?
I'd also include the city engineer.
Aubrey. I'd include the city engineer.
8:15 after a four-minute break.
8:15. Oh, yeah.
8:15. Motion by Aubrey.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.